That we all, you know, do drugs, we all drink, we all, you know, and it's not that, it's not that.
This is a homeless housing development on Martin Luther King Boulevard. We want to have people moved in and we want to have a celebration on Martin Luther King Weekend.
Three, two, one, yeah!
Anything can happen to anybody, you know? We want to be prepared for these situations.
We believe that holding up the traditions and the spirit of Martin Luther King means reaching out and making sure we take care of the least of these.
We are educated people, we are people that have careers, have had careers, we are people that want to make a change. My heart rejoices that we have good people that, you know, do think about us. And now, look, I have a place I can call home.
They were some of the most vicious acts of terror in LA's history. And now, a new book looks back at the fear and frenzy that swept our city during the Night Stalker period. Gil Reyes takes us to LA's Central Library.
It was the spring and summer of 1985. Back to the Future was the number one movie in the theaters. Live aid concerts raised tens of millions of dollars for famine relief in Africa. And here in Los Angeles, a suspect was on the loose. This photo exhibit at the LA Central Library examines the social impact of the infamous Night Stalker case.
Law enforcement as a whole mobilized all over Southern California looking for this guy.
This guy was serial killer Richard Ramirez, the subject of retired LAPD Officer Glenn Martin's new book entitled Satan's Summer in the City of Angels: The Social Impact of the Night Stalker.
And it was a time when nobody thought they were safe. So, yeah, I suppose you could look at it as a reminder, but it's a retrospective on how awful that summer was.
We went from, in 1984, the Olympics where everybody was thrilled, to a year later, and all of a sudden, you know, the whole community is terrorized.
Dean Musgrove, former photographer at the now-defunct LA Herald Examiner and his crew, took many of the photos now in the book, including this one of the East LA neighbors who chased and held Ramirez until the cops arrived. He was eventually convicted of 13 murders, as well as several rapes and burglaries. The photos during this manhunt are now on display at downtown's Central Library, which purposely omitted any photos of the killer. Proceeds from the book benefit the library and photo friends of the LA Public Library.
We're all volunteers, we're all people who love Los Angeles' history and photography, and we basically do programming to support the photo collection.
And what a collection! The LA City Library has 120,000 archived photos available.
It's a resource for authors, for the motion picture industry.
We do charge a fee, though, because they do help benefit the photo collection. People can get copies, we make prints, we can do eight-by-ten prints, all the way up to 42-inch prints, so we can fit a variety of needs. People can go to tessa, T-E-S-S-A, dot L-A-P-L dot org, that is our digital portal.
For writers and documentary filmmakers, it would be criminal if you didn't.
The photo exhibit is on display at the Tom Bradley Wing of the Central Library. Admission is free. For more info, visit LAPL.org. It's been 25 years since the Northridge earthquake. Since then, have we become better prepared for the next one? That was the question being asked by Councilmember Bob Blumenfield as he looked back at the devastating earthquake.
Twenty-five years ago, on this very day, a powerful earthquake rocked Southern California and forever altered the lives of so many, including lives lost.
As horrific of an incident as it was, it was a shining day for LA City workers because the city, family, the employees came together and really helped put LA back together again, helped put the valley back together again. There's a lot that we need to do to get ourselves fully prepared. We talked about at this press conference a number of those steps, including the Shake LA app, which everybody should download. Have a ready-set-go bag so that you've got the needed material with you or in your car, keeping extra cash around, having a designated location where your family will be a point of contact for your family members. And there's things that people can do as volunteers. We have a great CERT program in LA, which I urge people to be part of, which trains people to be first responders themselves. It's not a question of whether there'll be another earthquake, it's a question of whether it will be a disaster.
Police Chief Michael Moore reaches out to the community in a town hall. A long-awaited pathway to PCH begins to take shape, and community members thank those who helped end the teachers' strike. All this in City Beat. LAPD Chief Michael Moore held a public safety town hall meeting for the residents of the East San Fernando Valley. The chief addressed public questions and concerns, as well as discussed challenges the LAPD faces looking forward in effectively policing the community.
People involved in violent crime, people who are engaged in thefts and offending on others, this is an area that we're going to make those arrests.
Councilmember Mike Bonin and the Department of Wrecker Park broke ground on the long-anticipated Potrero pathway in Pacific Palisades. The path will extend from the hillside to PCH and will offer a variety of ocean views, as well as expanded recreation opportunities along the route. Completion is scheduled for 2020. Mayor Eric Garcetti mediated a successful end to the now-historic Los Angeles teachers' strike. After thousands of teachers and supporters marched in downtown LA, an agreement was reached between the normally contentious school board and teachers' union. Now, this is a special treat. Ever wanted to see your face on a big mural? Well, we caught up with local artists as they capture the real faces and stories of the community. It's all part of a local art show called Heart of Hyde Park, designed to inspire a new generation.
The project is called Heart of Hyde Park for a reason. It's focused on creating a mural for the corner of Slosson and Crenshaw, which is one of the most important intersections in this neighborhood.
By me being, growing up in this community, I felt that I was able to give voice and relate, and really just wanted to be a part of it.
It makes me feel special because I've never really been part of something as big of a mural. My older siblings are jealous, and my younger siblings don't really care.
I actually didn't think I would make it onto a mural before.
The most important element of depicting community members on the mural is that they see themselves in a way that recognizes that they're important. So many times in communities, every man gets overlooked for, you know, people from either outside of the community or people on TV or whatnot, but each person has an important voice and an important talent. So I think it's just important that we elevate them and depict them in ways that shows how important they are to us.
Our goal is to have them be involved in what seems like an art project, but really is a civic project. Many of the people that we are featuring are those community members who think about how to make this neighborhood a better place.
I really want to create the next public artist in Los Angeles. It's kind of the way that I want to give back to communities, because I can only paint so many murals, but if I create more mural lists, then they can create more murals around the city and beautify it.
This could get my name known, because I do want to be a politician, so people can look back on this and say, hey, wasn't that the kid on the bank in Hyde Park? Wow, that's crazy that he's the president now.
This next story is for the rockers in all of us. Now, I'm having flashbacks of my Prince vinyls. Want a super cool way to spend your next Saturday? Why don't you swing on by the Rock and Roll Flea Market at the Regent Theater for a taste of your favorite music legends, vintage garb, food, drinks, and lots of other sweet swag.
I always told people it's kind of like a party that just happens to sell things. It's vinyl, lots of used vinyl and new vinyl, vintage clothes, but it's kind of skewed to a more music-oriented crowd. We do have little collectibles and some old musical instruments.
This is my first time here. My friend and I are both here. We work in the music industry, and we kind of just decided that we needed a creative outlet, so we hit the books and we just started kind of designing stuff that we would like and that we would want to buy, and just kind of turned it into this.
When there's an outlet like this, that's both affordable for us as like vendors, but also affordable for, you know, people that want to come in and check things out, it's awesome. We definitely need more of it in the city.
There's music, there's cool people, cool stuff, it's just a lot to see. You can walk around, come here for an hour, shop, and like, just have a really awesome Saturday.
The Rock and Roll Flea Market happens every month at the Regent Theater in downtown LA. You know the drill, visit rnrflea.com. Learn all about yummy Japanese food, buy a special gift for that special someone at a Valentine's pop-up, and a treat not only for your eyes, but for your taste buds, too. All this and things to do. Your next culinary adventure awaits at the 2019 Japanese Food Expo. Learn about Japanese culture through dozens of workshops and exhibitors, all designed to help you cultivate a love and taste for Japanese foods and spices. An open table awaits at the Japanese Food Expo happening at the Hilton Los Angeles Universal City, located at 555 Universal Hollywood Drive. The expo was on Saturday, February 2nd, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. For ticket information, contact expo@jfcusa.org. The Craft Contemporary Shop presents a special Valentine's Day pop-up. This pop-up event at the Craft and Folk Art Museum features locally-made men's accessories from pocket square clothing and handcrafted jewelry curated by RISE Project. Find a meaningful gift that your Valentine will adore for years at the Valentine's Day pop-up from the Craft Contemporary Shop located at 5814 Wilshire Boulevard. It's open Tuesday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For more information, visit info@cafm.org. Get the red carpet treatment at a special screening of Visionaries, the PBS docu-series that highlights humanitarian service to Los Angeles' children in need. The screening and reception commemorates 100 years of service by the Assistance League of Los Angeles. You can check out the special screening of Visionaries on Saturday, February 2nd, starting at 5:00 p.m. The event will take place at Assistance League Theater located at 1367 North St. Andrews Place. For details, visit assistancylegalab.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at la-cityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next week for more of LA This Week.
As a foster youth, I've come to realize that I had no direction and no sense of way to know who I was going to become. My life was going down the path of not knowing whether to go left or right with being a product of the system because of the stigma and the stereotypes of a foster youth. With the help of the Higher LA Youth program, I was able to find myself within my career path to lead myself to becoming a certified linguistic interpreter with being also minoring in social work, to be able to help our community and our youths who are in need to continue on with their education, as well as moving forward in life for a better future. My name is Destiny Nuyen, and Higher LA Youth helps me with finding my career path.
Bloomfield, Bonin, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves, Smith seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves, O'Farrell seconds, that brings us where?
Mr. President, items one through eight are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Let's hold those items and continue, go to the next section.
Items nine through twelve are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected committee report for item ten has been posted and submitted for council's consideration.
All right, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Price was present on that vote. Continue.
Items thirteen through twenty-five are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special, general public comment, or presentations.
All right. Mr. Bloomfield, we do have a presentation. If you'd like to start, go right ahead.
Colleagues, Mr. President, we are here to celebrate Roy Morales, and it's hard to believe, but he is retiring from us here at the city after a quarter century of being with the CLA's office.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Looks way too young to be a quarter century with the CLA's office, but, you know, the facts are the facts, so here we are. Roy was born and raised in Sanger, California, in the Central Valley, to parents Thomas and Maria Morales. He was one of nine children, so he's always had to struggle to grab his part of the lunch, and he's been able to help us do that here in the city. He was educated in the local school system and then graduated in 1985 from UCLA, where he got his BA in political science, and then he followed that with a Masters of Public Policy from the University of California, Berkeley in 1987. And before joining the CLA, he worked with LAUSD, the LAUSD Board, in the Office of Government Relations, from 1988 to July of 1994. He has served as an analyst and an advisor to various council committees, including personnel, budget, finance, arts, and parks. He knows this city. His tenure with the city coincided with a time of momentous events in the life of City Hall, not the least of which was the complete seismic upgrade and the refurbishment of this amazing building where we are today. He played a significant role in the project and the reoccupation of the building by city council offices. So whether you realize it or not, he has had a big impact not only on our city and our professional lives, but on our personal lives as well, in terms of our everyday functioning. He has consistently displayed a professional, discreet, efficient, and calm demeanor, a model to be emulated. Before, you know, I joined the Budget Committee when I first became a council member, he was an incredible source of institutional memory, and assisted me in every step of the way, so I'm grateful to him personally. As he enters his retirement, he's looking forward to spending more time with his wife Eleanor, children Gabriel and Rachel, as well as focusing, as I understand it, on your golf game.
That's right.
He's a scratch golfer here. So, congratulations, Roy, on 25 years with the city family. That is pretty amazing. I'd give you a gold watch or something, but instead we have a certificate which is worth much more than a gold watch. So we want to thank you for your exemplary service, and best wishes on all your future endeavors. Thank you for all you've done for this city, for being part of this city, and we really hope your future is bright. Thank you.
Hey, Roy, before you speak, I've got a couple of members I want to recognize, but I just want to say that, you know, a lot of people don't appreciate the fact that you guys, you're the glue that keeps this city together. We kind of come and go, but you guys are the ones that make sure the lights stay on and that the services are delivered. So we want to thank you for your service to the greatest city on the planet. But with that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Roy, it was a pleasure working with you. I know you're kind of a young whippersnapper here. I'm only 25, I got 33, so you're a kid around here, but it was always a joy working with you. You always had a smile on your face. You accepted any responsibility willingly, just a great person to work with. And they mentioned the rebuilding of City Hall. Most people around here don't remember, but a lot of you do. We had to move the entire council and all of our staff to City Hall East at one point when they closed this building down. And that was Roy's responsibility to get us all moved over there and build a new council chambers. We were there for two years. It was quite an operation, but when we opened this building up, and this is a cute story, when we opened this building up, they planned this grand, grand opening of City Hall on the south lawn. There's a candlelight dinner, big band, all kinds of stuff going on, and fireworks. And, tell me if I'm wrong, but one of the fireworks went awry and shot through the fourth floor window to start a fire in the brand-new City Hall that wasn't even open yet. But it was an exciting moment for Roy. I'm sure as he saw his prodigy going up in flames, but it all worked out. Anyway, Roy, it's a pleasure working with all those committees, all those years. You're a real asset. All the people at the CLA's office are always a pleasure to work with, but you were one of those shiny stars. So good luck.
Thank you.
Roy, Mr. Smith assures me that it was Avak who was in charge of the fireworks, not him. I'd now like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that Roy Morales was the glue that held Arts, Parks together for a number of years. So I want to thank you for your steady guidance, your calm, your expertise, your professionalism. You really embody that standard, I think, for everyone in your entire department. So, Bob, thank you for bringing Roy here so we can all applaud him and celebrate 25 incredible years in the city family. I just am so happy for you. In your retirement, you get to spend with your family, and you deserve it. You deserve everything good in life to come. Thank you for your service.
Well said, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm stunned, Roy. I saw you standing there, and I'm like, I want to give him a certificate for. I can't believe that you're retiring. That's, it's both shocking to me, because I think of you as being young, way too young for retirement, and because you're one of the few faces there that I've known since the time I joined the city in the 90s. I mean, Paul, and Ivania, and Sharon, and, well, Avak, I mean, it's a whole other story. You have just been, you've been a constant, you've been a rock. We haven't worked together particularly closely since I've been on the council. We haven't had a lot of overlap in our assignments, but you're part of the real brain and muscle in an office that is the brain and the muscle of this building. And nobody outside of here knows what the hell the CLA is, or what they do, but here we do. And we know that so much of the hard work and the great thinking comes from that office, and you have just been a stellar representative and a champ there. And, man, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
But take Avak with you.
Okay.
Let's give him one more round of applause, everybody. He deserves it. The entire CLA office deserves it. Roy, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and like a good analyst, I wrote it down so I don't forget what I want to say. Thank you, Councilman Bloomfield, for giving me this honor to speak here, because this is a golden opportunity to say thank you to so many people that I got to work with over these years, and to say thank you, especially to the city council and to your predecessors. This has been an awesome ride, let me tell you. This place is amazing. It's been fun to work with you. It's been productive, it's been exciting, it's been unexpected, it's been frustrating, and it's been, and all along, I've enjoyed every single minute of it. I especially want to thank all my friends and coworkers who've helped me along the way. You see a bunch of my fellow analysts here and friends all throughout here, and friends, council staff as well, that we've all grown up together. Councilman Bonin, we grew up together as well here. It's been wonderful. And like Councilman Bloomfield said, growing up in the Central Valley, up in the Fresno area, my parents, nine children, never expected to end up in Los Angeles City Hall, in these great council chambers, celebrating a career that I think is the absolute perfect job for any public policy analyst. And where else would you get the chance to, you know, to follow this leadership and to help you develop and implement your policies? And let me just point one thing out, because this building is near and dear to me. If you look around here, there are 12 columns. Back in the day, they put little symbols of each of the states. There were 48 states at the time. They're all looking over you every single day of the year. This is the center of policy for the nation. This is where it all happens. People follow your leadership. And so, keep up the great work, and these folks behind me and everyone else in the city will continue to help you. So, thank you. And I've been blessed to work for three amazing chief life city analysts. I was brought over here by Mr. Ron Deaton, and then I worked for Jerry Miller, and of course, our wonderful CLA Sharon So. When Mr. Deaton asked me to leave the LAUSD, I'm a little nervous, I felt like I was joining the all-star team over here, because these people here are amazing. They're intelligent, they're thoughtful, they are supportive, they know their subjects, and they're willing to help you in whatever you need to do. And then Sharon, all these years, my special and personal thanks. She's been so supportive to me these last few years. There's a lot going on, and she's been there for me every step of the way. So, thank you, Sharon.
I see why we're going to miss him.
And then to all my fellow CLA staffers, many of you that you see here, you made me smile every day. That was great. It was an adventure coming to the office every single day. It was an adventure, you know, getting through big budget. And we all know about big budget during the budget hearings on 420 every year. This process starts, and it is just, it's just a marathon the entire way. Andrea is going to take over, and she's going to do a wonderful job with Sharon and Karen. And you will never really know what happens back there in that budget mill during council day, but let me tell you, you don't want to go back there. Just stay, I'd say stay here on the council floor. To my friends in the CAO's office, Bureau of Sanitation and Engineering, all the other departments, you've been really supportive whenever I have questions, even what I call 101 questions, which are just basic questions about procedures. You've been so helpful in helping me get the answers so that I can help this council implement your policies and develop your policies. And lastly, of course, I do want to mention, and I want to thank her so much, to my awesome wife of 31 years, Eleanor. She wasn't able to make it here today. And to my two beautiful daughters, Gabriella and Rachel, they're both in San Diego, they weren't able to make it here today. You know, all these years, I've been here for 25 years and five years at the school board, I still can't explain to them what a legislative analyst does, but they provided me with love and unending support and patience, especially, you know, when we have budget hearings going till midnight, they were still there for us, for me, and I really want to thank them so much for being there for me. So, Mr. Councilman Bloomfield, and Mr. President, and council members, thank you once again for this honor and for the chance to say goodbye, and good luck to you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your service. Thank you. You guys are covering up Queenie with the certificate. My oldest friend in City Hall. All right, one more round of applause. And Roy, good luck. Good luck as you start this new chapter in your life. Okay, I'm going to go into the multi-comment section. So, Mr. Herman, you have items one through eight, and thirteen through... Twenty-five, and then general public comment. So give him his three minutes, and then he'll get his one minute. Yes, sir. Speak to the items.
Now that we have your intention regarding clean, safe neighborhood, regarding parks and beaches, you, the voters, voted on taxes. You, the taxpayers, voted 75%, but yet at 0.25%, we still have a homeless crisis, thanks to that fucked-up mayor, Eric Garcetti. So, the city's 2019, 2020 state legislative program support by those, not including the supervisors, will ensure that Measure A expenditures shall exceed, shall exceed, because dumb motherfuckers like this don't know how to manage money. And for that reason, you heard in the presentation, the gentleman is resigning, quitting, because he don't want to be a part of the motherfucking...
No, stay on the topic, Mr. Herman. On the topic, please.
...physical localities of the board supervisors to reject high need study areas because we're in bankruptcy. And for that reason, Mommy Martinez and O'Farrell's funding for streetscape beautification projects don't fucking matter. No matter how fucking beautiful you make your community, you got the wetback and Negroes fucking it up. Fucking it up. Where's the beautification when you got eyesores in your community where people illegally dump, motherfucker? Get on a fucking train and see all the beautification you've done.
Stick on, stay on the item.
So, when transferring appropriate $1 million, $200,000 for Roy Shaw Park in opposition of the council community project, motherfuckers, capital improvement is not satisfied. So, I'm authorizing the Bureau of Engineers to make those fucking corrections to improve what Measure A and all those fucking measures that the public fucking voted on to get you to work. And I'm glad that fucking Mayor Eric Garcetti stepped down to finally come and do his job regarding to the intent in motion, including corrections and changes to the fund of numbers set by corrections and clarifications to why, to transfer appropriate $1 million for no shit like home.
Could we give him his one minute?
So as you heard, Jose Weezer, the wetback from Sacatecas, and the clergy of the Catholic Church of Silesia, Bishop Lamont, have been money laundering, taking your money to pad their wallets. And the Catholic Church has done this for millenniums, raping young children, fucking the nuns and burying the children in the wall, and now fucking Jose Weezer and the Catholic Church are taking your public funds. But thank you, FBI, now that you're investigating all these corrupted fucking politicians and their fucking stupidness, like the city attorney up there, who probably isn't circumcised Jew, understand this. I am glad that the Turkish community is taking its borders and building up flags to stop those fucking Armenians from fucking up our neighborhoods. Fuck you, God bless America.
Thank you, your time has expired. Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, you have items seventeen through twenty-five, and then your general public comment. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, CD2, and I very much appreciate the time to participate in this public meeting. And I just would like to clarify that we have a schism in the feeling about posting public meeting agendas in this hall. Some people believe it's a good idea.
So, Mr. Previn, it's actually not an item. Mr. Previn, let's get on the...
No, no, I'll go on to the agenda. I just...
Mr. Previn, let's just go on your items.
Sure. So, for example, item 21, is a vacation of some property, city property, to a group called United El Segundo, Inc. I think Coretts knows them, and Fewer knows them, because they took contributions from that group. And then what they did was they vacate a significant chunk of property, but it's all because, you know, I wouldn't call Coretts in the pocket of the oil people, because he usually is on the other side, but he took, I think it was $700 on May 19th, and then on September 28th, a little later, Fewer took it. Now, the funny thing is that both of them are from a very affluent part of town, but this is in Bonin's district, so there's no funny business. That's the beauty of the program. Now, Mike Fewer, who is the guy who took the contribution from United El Segundo, Inc. in September of 2016, is an excellent, he's the city attorney, for those who don't know, and on February 19th at 9:00 AM, there's a lawsuit that's going to be oral argument.
Speak to the item, mister.
No, it's an oral argument, sir. All right, I will speak to it, but he's the Mike, Mike Fewer, the guy who took the donation for this project.
If you want to talk about that in your general public...
No, no, I don't want to. I want to go on to the items. I want to stay on the items, sir. All right, hacienda vacation, hacienda vacation. Here we have Harvard Westlake requested, and they're, sir, I know you like that group, they do a robust program. They requested some airspace over Coldwater Canyon, and our neighbors came, I would say, completely out of the woodwork, went berserk, and, you know, made an argument to not do a big parking garage in our hillside. I think you remember Harvard Westlake, the parking garage, a little while ago. Now, even though Avak has been told 15 times, we do not want to see this on the agenda because it frightens our neighbors and we all wonder what's going on, is this in fact a bona fide item, or is it once again a technical mistake, and has it been withdrawn? We were just told in our community that it was withdrawn. I would ask Recorim, but obviously he's at the Dodger, he's got a hat over there in his place today. But look, the Rams, let's try to be positive as we head to the public comment. I don't want to go negative, but we do want to know that that is not being considered today. The hacienda airspace vacation. Mr. Foebel, would you like to address that, or no? No, you don't want to address it.
Continue, Mr. Previn, just stay on your items.
Well, I must say, that's extremely worrisome, and I do intend to raise the red flag. Are you saying that they are going to be moving forward with requesting that airspace vacation? This is the item on the agenda. There's no, you don't have to respond, but I would encourage you to. Okay, so I'll just raise it with Save Coldwater. They can understand themselves what's going on. Maybe they can reach out to Mike Fewer at mike.n.fuer.
Let's give him his one minute for general public.
And actually, Mr. President, before we do that...
Hold on, hold his time.
So, Mr. Herman, I was actually trying to pay attention to Mr. Previn, and I couldn't because you were moving around.
because you were moving around, standing up, doing all that stuff.
Mr. Previn-
Your time is being held, Mr. Previn, hold on.
Mr. Previn, now you're disrupting. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
So, Mr. Herman, or Mr. President, I suggest we give Mr. Herman a warning, he's obviously trying to distract us, and doing so, disrupting the meeting, taking our time.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you are disrupting, please, let's afford Mr. Previn the opportunity to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Start my time, sir. Before you start, I just want to get on the record that-
No, start his time.
Well, Buscaino and Sadio were laughing.
Start his time.
They were laughing, sir, it was disrupting my ability to focus on your violating the room. Now, getting back to the agenda thing, okay, I'm going to leave it real brief because we've already talked about it. You have to provide copies of the meeting agenda in the public meeting. I know Mr. Recycling wants to save the 40 photocopies, but we're not doing it, okay? You have to put them around. It's not appropriate, that is a, I mean, you'll have the whole California, it's a weak group, but the whole open government group. Now, getting back to the important stuff, and this is going to be a little shift of subject, I'm very sorry, but in our Neighborhood Council in Studio City, this is, I'm speaking almost on behalf of our whole group, because we voted, all but a couple of us, to approve a new way to vote in Studio City Neighborhood Council, and we have to know by tomorrow or the next day, and we asked the mayor, actually today or tomorrow, we asked Nick Greif, who's doing a great job working with David Rue, who are trying to bring some life back to the neighborhood councils, we really do need to make this change, because the last time resulted in an LA Times and Brokeley was a disaster, sir, and we don't want unlevel, and so we asked the mayor to grant a pilot, but you have the power to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Okay, now, before we continue, Madam Clerk, let's take up items one through eight. I got you, I got, let's take up items one through eight. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, I want to bring up Mickey. Jackson, please come forward.
Good morning. Mickey Jackson with AHF, Healthy Housing Coalition Preserve LA. I'm very concerned about what's going on with the city council attempting to vacate provisions of the CRA plans in general, and those plans were settled as being in effect, even though the agency was disbanded. And those plans carry benefits for developers and they carry obligations. I know everybody's jumping up and down and can't hand them the benefits fast enough, but what we're vacating here is the obligations, and that is ridiculous, to just give, 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 and those obligations were to help create affordable housing, if there's a housing crisis, you've said it yourselves, and now you're trying to get rid of obligations to create affordable housing. I do believe that this city council is schizophrenic.
Thank you. Now, are there any other individuals that wanted to speak on general public comment or comment that I haven't called? No, you were already called, Mr. Previn. Okay, so that concludes multi- and general public comment. Let's now vote on items 13 through 17. 13 through 17, if we please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and it's my understanding that it's requested that we receive and file item 18. So that is received and filed. Now let's move on to vote on items 19 through 25.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If we could vote on item 18 first?
Okay, that's my mistake. On 18, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now let's move on again to 19 through 25. On these items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before, or Mr. Harris Dawson?
Item number 22, forthwith.
Item 22, forthwith. Any other requests? Then what is before this body? No, general public comment and multi-comment has been closed.
And then, Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, any announcements? If we could now all rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my right side, Ms. Martinez's side, I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. Now, I am looking to my left, and Madam Clerk, if we could adjourn in the memory, and I'm not going to speak on it, but Stacy Press with a Y, Stacy with a personal friend. Okay, there are no more adjourning motions, then this council is adjourned.
Wilmington and San Pedro have always been the gateway to Catalina since back in the late 1800s. My father, myself, and a friend of mine started Catalina Express, along with my brother Tim, in 1981, and we came in to actually replace the seaplanes that were at that point going out of service, so what we needed to do was replace that service with fast boats. So we went out, we bought one boat, it was a 50-passenger, and we started out with doing three runs a day. About a million to a million-two people go to and from Catalina on an annual basis, and back in 1981 when we started, I think we carried 3,500 people that year. Both my daughter Amanda and my son Eric-